Good evening, everyone. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast through Milford TV and other media are also in attendance. If anyone would like to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, please let me know. Thank you again. Today is Thursday, July eighteenth, and I should have said this earlier, welcome to the Milford School Committee meeting. So we will begin this evening's meeting with an approval of minutes. I assume that everyone has had an opportunity to read the minutes from, which meeting are we on? June twentieth, twenty nineteen. Has everyone had an opportunity to read them? Any questions, comments about the minutes? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the June twentieth meeting? Motion by Laura, second by John, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Do any members have any announcements tonight, distributions? I know our superintendent does.
Yeah, so I have, um, I have two announcements. The first is, um, the August meeting for the school committee is being shifted from August fifteenth to August twenty-second, so please, if, um, the viewing public at home could make a note of that. Secondly, uh, we've got a couple of our new administrators here this evening, but I also want to share that Carrie Taylor, the Director of Mathematics, and Vico Lucas, Assistant Principal at Stacy Middle School, will be joining us in the August meeting to introduce themselves to the community. So we're excited, we're excited about both of them being here. Not that we're not excited about the two folks who are in the, in the audience today. We love when we ever, whenever we have audience members.
Great. All right, moving on, um, our next item is invitation to speak. And, uh, looking out there at the vast crowd, I think the, our two invited guests will have an opportunity, um, a little bit later in the agenda. Moving on, we had the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Curry.
Uh, yes, I have to the committee's approval this evening warrants in the amount of six hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents.
Do we have a motion to approve? Mo- um, motion by Meg, second by Chris, all in favor?
We also have a professional development request in the amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Motion to approve? Motion by Jim, second by John, all in favor?
The committee also has the latest appointments and hires from our previous meeting. No vote is required, information only. Um, we do have our final financial, uh, budget transfer request for the fiscal year nineteen. And, uh, essentially, you can see on the right-hand side of the budget request that the deficits were mainly the transportation that we were tracking all year, as well as the out-of-district tuition. Um, unfortunately, that we had the opportunity, fortunately or unfortunately, the majority of our, uh, budget offset is under instruction, which seven, uh, staff members requested a leave of absence in the fiscal year. So those funds, um, along with, um, maintenance projects were put on hold for the next fiscal, um, budget with, uh, Mr. Quinn, who began projects in July. So the funds, um, that I have before you is a budget transfer request to bring our budget with a remaining nine dollars and seventy-eight cents to be returned to the town in the amount of seven hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Which does require a vote.
Okay. Motion by Jim, or did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Motion by Jim, second by Laura, all in favor?
And I do want to just mention that, um, Lenny and I, for the transportation deficit, we put out a bid to all of our special ed routes. And those bids are due in next week, so that, uh, maybe we can get some sharpening of the Pensilvana, uh, routes that we have. In addition, we're also looking at the possibility of purchasing an additional van, which would offset the cost for one out-of-district run in, um, FY twenty. And from that point forward, it would be a savings for the next four years. So we're looking at what the cost of the van would be and what route could we designate to that. So we're looking at a few ways to try to eliminate some of that deficit. I also have for the committee this evening-
Oh Kathy, wait one second.
Sorry.
Can I just-
Yes, sure.
-ask you if that's not the case for me? I know when we talked about the bus contract, there were basically no other vendors. I'm assuming that's not the case with the special ed transportation. We would expect to see many RFPs come back.
We have, um, I would say six vendors that we utilize on a regular basis for our special ed out-of-district. Uh, but we're reaching out to maybe three or four others-
Okay.
-and hopefully getting some new interest as well.
And they take the, those, all of the routes? I don't appreciate how many routes there are.
There are many routes.
Yeah, okay.
So we sent that to all vendors with a closed, um, process and they're all due into the superintendent's office in a sealed envelope next week.
And some of those are also done by the collaborative? So schools in which we're part of a collaborative, those would be different?
That's correct. We have, uh, the town pays for the North Lock Aggie, which is a collaborative.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, there's about ten different towns that participate.
Thanks.
And this is just another way we're trying to kind of cont- control costs in an unpredictable budget line. That, that, you know, we don't have a whole lot of control over because they're driven by other processes.
Okay.
I, you know, just in, um, line with what you're talking about, it occurs to me that tonight we're talking about Dr. McIntyre's evaluation and we don't evaluate you Kathy, um, nor should we or would you want us to? Um, but you really do an outstanding job. And I think that your knowledge of everything in this district, from the things that I think really come under your purview, to just the general knowledge, you know, all the way to teaching and learning, um, you really are instrumental in a lot of projects and a lot of things happening, including always being very fiscally responsible and always trying to find another way, both to conserve, but also to make things happen. Um, so thank you for all that work that you do on, on our behalf and for our students.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate that, Jim. Uh, we also have this evening a, um, a out-of-state, uh, out-of-the-country, um, travel request from Mrs. Davron. She is looking to do a Quebec trip, trip, um, next year again. Uh, actually, it's to Montreal, Canada. Um, she would like to travel, uh, next June, uh, twenty-third through June twenty-sixth. Um, it is out-of-state and does require a vote.
Okay. Any questions or discussions for Kathy?
I just had a question on that. Kevin, is that after the school year ends? That was my only question.
Yeah, one of the things we're tr- we're trying to do is to limit the, um, impact of, like, larger trips.
Great.
So, you know, I, I don't think it's going to impact the number of students that are interested. But this has been, this has been a great trip. Uh, Ms. Davron has done a great job with the program. Um, I know there's a lot of kids that are looking forward to it and they get a, they get the opportunity, they go to a French-speaking city in Canada, so they have the opportunity to practice their French. And she creates some really kind of great opportunities for them to go to restaurants where all are speaking in French, so they order food. They might interact with, um, you know, students from, you know, Montreal, they develop some relationships. So, um, I, yeah, I think it's a great, great opportunity, a great experience. And, and I think one of the things she's looked at is, you know, how do we not conflict with some of the stuff going on during the school year?
Excellent.
Yep?
No question. Is there any possibility that the school year gets extended that long?
It's possible, what we've-
Is that, is that discussed?
Yeah, so what we've done in the-
What implications that may have?
Yeah, so what we've done in those cases, we've had, um, trips to China and I want to say a couple other places towards the end of the school year. And what we do is when we know, we generally know in April, like late April, like kind of when the school year is going to end.
Hopefully by then.
I don't make, I'm going to knock on wood, I don't make any predictions, we had such a good year this year. Um, we make, we make accommodations for the students that go on a trip to take final exams or to finish out the school year. And we've done that at the high school level, um, and, you know, I'm sure we can accommodate it at the middle school level as well. But it's a, it's a good question, because it's always a possibility.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Okay. Um, do we have a motion to approve the Quebec field trip? Motion by Chris? Second by Jim? Second by John?
Second by anybody.
Second by whoever you would like to write down?
I was on, yeah. A second, that's the thing that I, you know, I was around.
All right, um, vote on that? All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you Kathy. All right, so we have two guests here with us tonight and we're very happy to welcome both of you. Um, Mr. Tahan Ross and Lee Wayne, Wayne Gordon?
Wayne Gordon.
Wayne Gordon. It's very nice to have both of you. Um, would you like them to join us at the table?
Yeah, so maybe Tahan can come up first, if that's okay? Yeah, just right up to the microphone. Um, Tahan loves being on camera.
Did you two plan your outfits?
You know, if, if you play your, play your a lapel off, because it is different.
Oh, okay.
It's a little different. His is polo, mine is probably Macy's. Or Marshall's, more likely. Um, so, very excited to have Tahan jump on board. Um, he's had great experience, um, in a number of districts. Uh, I think he's got the potential to be a phenomenal instructional leader. He's already hit the ground running at Stacy Middle School. He's going to share, I think, very briefly, like, his background and experience and some of the, like, the activities he's kind of engaged in the last couple of weeks. And he's more than willing to, and, and happy to take any questions or comments you guys might have. So go ahead, it's all yours.
So, uh, I'm excited to be here. Uh, I've, uh, as, uh, Dr. McIntyre mentioned, I've worked in a couple of di- a few different districts. Um, I'm a native of Springfield, Massachusetts, and I started, uh, my teaching career there. Um, and, uh, around two thousand and ten, my sister attended NYU. I had guardianship of her and we both headed off to New York. So, I, I worked in New York teaching while she was at NYU. Uh, around two thousand and fifteen, I, um, transitioned to Washington DC, where I took a, uh, Dean of School Culture position. Um, and, and from there, I became an assistant principal for the last, uh, three years. Uh, and I'm happy to be here, uh, in Milford, as the principal of Stacy Middle School. Um, the transition has been very smooth. Um, everyone, I appreciate the, the warm welcome from everyone, the quick hellos, uh, emails and conversations have definitely made it a smooth transition. Um, I would say, uh, I can't believe that it's been almost two weeks since I officially started. Um, but over the last, uh, you know, over the last two weeks, um, I have charged myself with meeting with every person and every, uh, um, staff member at Stacy Middle School uh, for thirty minutes. Um, so, so far, I've met with fourteen people. Uh, and I'm going to give myself until the end of September. Uh, you know, given the large number of staff and people are away for the summer. Uh, but during that thirty minutes, um, I just have a couple, I, you know, I front-load a couple of questions to them. You know, what's working and, um, and does it need to be, uh, you know, touched? Um, and what needs to be fixed immediately? And what advice do you have for me? Um, and, and I would say, um, I'm kind of, uh, an objective summary of all the exchanges thus far um, has led me to believe that we really need to put a lot of effort into the school culture and climate as, as Stacy. Um, so I'm trying to, you know, I've held, uh, meetings with the admin team in an effort to kind of come up with ways to, to, to do just that. So everything from, you know, uh, figuring out ways to celebrate micro wins with, with students, as well as staff, you know, recognizing students. Um, even little things, like if it, if it's a student's birthday, give them a shout-out during the morning announcements, uh, tell them to report to the, the office, uh, file a dismissal to get something out of the birthday box. Um, also, you know, even for the award ceremonies that take place, you know, uh, each, you know, uh, trimester. Trying to, uh, in the be- in the past, students have only been recognized if they made the, the honor roll. So now we're going to expand that and, you know, honor students who have, you know, done well attendance, um, benchmark assessments and so forth. Um, you know, for staff, we're just trying to figure out ways to recognize staff as well. Um, and, you know, one of the things, one of the first things I did was let's have a, you know, Staff of the Month parking space. Um, and, uh, I've met with some of the students and, you know, they, you know, said that they wanted college visits. So I met with the guidance department, asked them to schedule, uh, you know, college visits in an effort to promote col- uh, early college awareness. And, uh, met with a couple of, met with, uh, Mr. Cody today and talked about mural, murals in the building. He goes, "Oh my God, can I please take down, you know, a bulletin board next to my room and put a mural there? And it would be great if we could kind of pilot this and then have, you know, have it go across, uh, the grade levels." So little things like that. We've just been kind of compiling a, a huge list of things to, uh, improve the, the, the culture. And all of that will inform, um, an, uh, ninety-day plan, which I will share in August.
Great.
Thank you. Any members have any comments, questions?
No, I just want to say welcome aboard and, um-
That was just a great summary of your background and, and what's happened in the last two weeks and where you're going in the, in the short term. And, um, I like, you know, your approach of, you know, trying to identify what works and what also is problem areas. So, um, thank you for being here tonight and, um, it was a really nice presentation.
Thank you.
Chris?
And, uh, welcome to Milford, congratulations. And, um, looking forward to, um, seeing the changes throughout the Stacy Middle School that you have received and throughout your reading.
Thank you.
Jim?
Welcome aboard, thank you so much for coming here tonight. Um, it was a great, uh, background. Thanks so much for hitting the ground running. And, um, I wish you a ton of success there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're excited to have both your energy and your expertise, so we're glad to have you in Milford. I believe when you interviewed, you also spoke to community and family engagement. Do you have any thoughts in terms of how you might approach that as the school year?
Yes, um, so, um, I have been working with Dr. McIntyre to identify some dates to meet with the community. Um, and we came up with the idea of, uh, popsicles with the principal. So we'll send out, um, you know, um, invites to the community for probably maybe two to three dates to meet before school starts.
I didn't anticipate that to be scheduled, given you've only been here two weeks. I just know it's something you're already thinking about, so I was just curious if that had come to fruition.
Yes, we talked about it, uh, actually before my start date.
Thanks. Appreciate it. And how about the students initially, when they come to school? Any thoughts in terms of how you, you know, obviously you can't engage one-on-one with all of them, but any thoughts in terms of how you'll introduce yourself to the student population?
Um, well, I know right off the di- right off the bat, um, I will be out front during, on the first day. Um, and I want to try to, um, in much the same way that I've met with, with, with staff, I want to try to meet with groups of students. Um, so I'll reach out to the clusters and ask them to identify, you know, a wide range of students, uh, you know, s- so that I can kind of meet with them in, in an effort, much like a focus group, uh, to kind of garner some of the same information that I've gotten from staff.
Excellent, thanks.
Yeah, but I'll be outside first day of school, uh, and I'll have somebody in the Hawk uniform to, uh, in a Hawk costume to be stood with.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for saying, um, welcome aboard and we're happy to have you here in Milford. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jito, I think everything's already been said, um, and I truly appreciate you taking the time to meet with everybody. I think that coming in and that listening is huge anywhere, um, and especially, I think, for groups of teachers who sometimes feel that they're not heard, not specifically Stacy, but I think in general. So I think giving people that time and really actively listening to their, um, expertise and their, their hopes and dreams for making that school the best it can be is a wonderful way to start. So thank you very much and we're really happy to have you.
All right, you're all set, Tahan?
Okay.
Short and sweet.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
So Lee, come on up.
Hi, Jim. Everybody, happy to be here.
Welcome.
So, Li- Lee, um, Wayne Gordon has a fantastic background. So she's worked, um, with the Hudson Public Schools. We've had good experience with the Hudson Public Schools. We grabbed Josh Allen, our high school principal, from there. So hopefully we're going to be two for two. And based on my experiences with Lee so far, I have no doubt she's been fantastic. Um, she also has extensive, mm, um, experience as a, um, as a resource nurse. So she's, she's been like a nurse leader at the, kind of the regional level. And she's got a tremendous amount of experience, um, working in a variety of healthcare settings as well. So she's going to be joining us both as our s- um, shining star preschool nurse, as well as our Director of Nursing. And I just happened to be down, I was checking on, uh, enrollment numbers at the Family, uh, Family Resource Center, and Judy, Dagnese and Lee were meeting, and I just happened to walk by and, and Judy seemed more relaxed than I've ever seen her.
Yeah.
Were we giggling and we were-
Yeah, I think there's some laughter coming from there and I was like, this is great. But, uh, but Judy's, uh, supporting, you know, Lee's transition, which is fantastic. And, um, we're getting rave reviews from the nursing team, uh, about Lee. And I, I know, um, she's going to hit the ground running as well. And she's bringing a lot of great ideas and great energy. So I'll have you introduce yourself and then maybe throw it out to the community for-
Right, thanks for that introduction. Thank you for having me here tonight. I know some of you were in my interview, so I'm seeing you again. Nice meeting you all for the first time. Um, I've, like Kevin mentioned, I've, uh, been in Hudson for fourteen years and, um, just felt it was ready for a change and I was looking for the right type of position. And, um, this came up because what I liked about it was the fact that it's a dual role. I get to be, um, an actual school-based nurse and also, um, a Director of Nursing, which I am in Hudson now, uh, full-time. And so I, I just thought it would be a great opportunity for new challenges and new opportunities, meet new people, learn new things, and help sort of drive the nursing, um, department forward, um, which I tried to do in Hudson, was to kind of keep up with all the, um, best practices and evidence-based practices. I love to learn. Um, I just got my master's degree in nursing, uh, two years ago. And, um, you know, bring what I've learned to the group and, and really learn about them, what their needs are, what they're looking for, what they feel we need to start working on. Um, you know, get to know the staff and the students and the parents. Um, but I just, school nursing is absolutely my passion. I, I kind of came to it by accident a little bit. I was a case manager in a hospital on workers' comp for years and years and years and started subbing in my kid's school, um, and ended up getting a job in this elementary school. And, um, just, just grew and learned and learned and there's just never a dull moment. It's always something new and challenging, um, so it's, it's an awesome job. Um, but I guess just to tell you what my priorities are, um, to start, would be to get to know the staff and the students and the parents, pe- particularly in the shining star preschool and the nurses. Um, look at what we're doing in terms of the best practices and, and so forth. Uh, make sure we're con- conforming to the regulations, because there's a lot of regulations. There's new regulations coming down the pike all the time. Um, and, you know, help develop them professionally by working on getting speakers in and just try to move the practice forward. Um, and then we have like a big thick book Judy gave me, which is the nursing protocols. And I would like to eventually get everything onto like a Google Drive and so we can access it anywhere. Um, but I think, again, it's important to keep looking forward and moving forward and pushing to get, um, advancing the practice of school nursing. Um, some challenges I'm just thinking of right off the bat is you might have heard about the Medicaid free care rule changes. There, um, opened up, um, certain, um, allowable billing where we can bill for nursing services for students that aren't on IEPs. They have to be either on a hi- five oh four or individual healthcare plan. And I sent out, um, a bunch of emails today to nurses in my regional group in central region. And basically, no one's quite starting it yet. We're s- all sort of in the cusp of this. So I see it kind of moving gradually towards that as we learn more and more about it. I did go to all the trainings last year, I've got all the materials, um, but it's still a little, um, new to us as nurses for billing. We don't really do it that often. We can also bill or submit for reimbursement for screenings, such as, uh, vision and hearing and the Esperit screening too, for any student that's on Mass Health or eligible for Mass Health. And again, we're not sure how this process is going to move, but I know, um, the Student Services or Special Ed Department, you know, will work closely on that. So that might eventually bring in some more revenue into the town of Milford and hopefully it'll trickle down to us. And we have a-
That's very optimistic.
Yes, hopefully. Um, there's a new electronic health record software program called SNAP that they're starting this year. Took over from Health Office, you might have heard that. And we've used that in, uh, Hudson for years and years and years. So I'm very familiar with it, very comfortable with it. And so we'll have professional development around that. And it's a great way to collect data. We use the data constantly. So for grants, someone might email me and say, "How many behavioral health visits did you have?" And we're able to just say, "This is how many we had last year." And this is how many medications we gave. Um, so it's a great source of data and the reports are really good to, easy to follow. And the nurses will pick up on it very quickly. Um, and then lastly, another challenge, um, is there's a low sub pool currently. There's only a couple of subs, um, and we need, I think we need desperately to have more subs, because if we don't have nurses in the building, um, it's going to be a challenge, it's going to be difficult. So I would like to, you know, work on recruiting and, and hiring and orienting, um, qualified nurses to become nurse subs. So that's about all I have from my spiel. Any questions or?
Questions? Go ahead, Jim.
So, well, I, I don't have any questions. I just want to say this is even, I know, just on the screen.
Yes, you are.
And you are certainly a standout in that, in that, um, process. Uh, so I just wanted to say welcome aboard and, um, I know you, you definitely will hit the ground running. I don't think there'll, there'll be much learning curve at all. Um, so, uh, I just feel that we're lucky to have you, so.
Thank you. And I just want to echo what, I didn't catch his name, the new principal of the middle school. But, you know, I also feel very warmly welcomed. I've been getting emails and invitations and, you know, being set up with the SNAP program and Aspen. And so I just feel like a, a very warm welcome and I appreciate that. And my ch- my email's up and everything, so I really appreciate that a lot. And I'm, I'm very excited about being here. Um, it was not easy to make a move after fourteen years, as you can imagine. I carefully considered it and, you know, I'm, this is a hundred percent certain that this is the right move. So I'm really glad to be here.
That's great. Megan?
Well, thrilled to have you. I'm really impressed by how thoughtful, um, both your goals and priorities and challenges are. So good luck addressing those in the year ahead.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Lee.
Welcome to the Milford School Community and, uh, looking forward to, you know, working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, welcome aboard. Uh, thank you for coming in tonight and, um, we are very lucky to have someone with your background.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Appreciate my best.
And it's nice to see you again and-
Nice to see you too.
Really, um-
It was clear after the interview process that you are the right person for the job, so I'm really happy to see that you're on board.
Great.
Thanks for coming and we're happy to have you.
Thank you, thank you everybody. And I'm sure I'll see you again at some point.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, Lee.
Thanks, you too.
Right, that brings us to the evaluation of the superintendent. Let's see, people came out in droves to listen to this tonight. Um, so I'll share with the committee that the way this kind of rolled out and, um, you know, I will admit that it was a little daunting putting this together for the first time. It's a lot of information and, um, a lot of hard work on the part of the committee, really analyzing. There's a lot of information to analyze, um, and synthesize and kind of capture, um, to paint a picture of the person who's been leading our schools for the past one hundred and eighty days. And certainly thanks to you, Kevin, for compiling evidence for us and, um, helping to give us a little bit of a picture and an insight into the work that you do. Um, given the fact that we have a very small crowd, I, I don't know quite how the committee would like me to handle this. I could just kind of go through and give a quick summary of some of the highlights, um, if that works for people. Um, is that, that feel comfortable to people? Okay. Uh, so essentially, for anyone who's watching, all, you know, one and a half people, uh, we, uh, evaluate the superintendent on his goals and on the four standards that DESI puts out for all superintendents. And, um, superintendents are rated in, um, categories. And those categories include exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory. And a proficient educator is the kind of educator that you want to see in front of your children. It's the type of leader that you want to see leading your school district. And Dr. McIntyre's, um, ratings from this committee were almost all in the proficient category. We had a few in the exemplary category, um, one kind of outlier and a needs improvement. But overall, with everything averaged, um, he has done a, what this committee would consider compiling all the information, a proficient job. And, um, that, that speaks so highly of the work that Dr. McIntyre has done for us and for our students in our schools. So you have a copy of that in front of you. Um, I think in terms of Dr. McIntyre's goals, um, overall, I think that the assessment from this committee is that there's been work done and accomplished in every one of the goal areas that he has put forth. Um, continuous learning, leading the Long Range Education Facilities Plan, technology implementation, digital tools, supporting learning, uh, fostering high expectations for instruction, um, offering professional development for his faculty, the expansion of the social emotional learning program for this year, and promoting success of all students through community, family, and, um, business partnerships. Um, those are the areas. Technically, a superintendent only needs to have three goals. Our superintendent shared six with us and shared, um, many, many accomplishments in each area. In terms of the actual standards, and I think that it's important for, this committee has seen, but for any community members who are interested in this process, if anyone were to look at the DESI rubric of how we actually rate a superintendent or any educator, um, we have four standards which roll into a number of indicators, which roll into a number of elements. Um, each time the numbers are multiplying, there are many, many things, um, that we expect of our educators in terms of finding someone who's proficient. Um, in standard one, some of the, um, the main things that stood out to this committee were the types of interventions that Dr. McIntyre has supported throughout the district, um, programs for academically at-risk students, Stacy Succeeds, Writing with Colors at the High School, um, really promoting a deeper understanding of assessment. And I think we've talked a lot around this table about data and assessment and how important that is in terms of leading students to success and, and success in the classroom. And he's participated in this mass consortium of innovative, innovative educational assessment with a number of members from Milford Public Schools. Uh, we've seen an expansion- Uh, we've seen an expansion of online tools. We have seen, um, grants coming through this district that have supported some of the online tools such as ST Math, um, which is a program that's quite expensive that now that, over the coming year will be expanded from just Woodland into both Brookside and Memorial. So that's a huge feather in the cap of this district. Um, college partnership, I think that Milford is really a leader. This is an up and coming area that a lot of districts are starting to kinda get on that bandwagon. And Milford has been talking about this and exploring this and actually implementing this for a while now, um, with colleges such as LaSalle, Framingham State, and Mass Bay. Um, to think that some of our students who may not be exposed to the college experience other than from what they receive from Milford High School, to have the opportunity to, um, see these colleges, to visit these colleges, to take classes in these colleges and actu- actually begin their college, um, trajectory while in high school is, um, pretty outstanding. Uh, we've had a strategic plan that's been shared with us. And the main focus areas that I think we've all heard multiple times are social emotional learning, equity and access, growth-focused instruction, and continuous learning. Um, and those are all areas that have kind of served as the umbrella for the work that Dr. McIntyre has done this year. In standard two, um, we talked a lot about, uh, that's the, the standard that refers to management and operations. Uh, in that section, we highlighted his work with Police and Fire, uh, welcoming the special ops team into Milford and that nice collaboration with Police and Fire. Um, the hiring of the SEL director has allowed for trauma-impacted, um, instruction, um, proactive programming in our schools rather than simply being reactive. Um, under Dr. McIntyre's leadership, um, we have brought the Chromebooks from a twinkle in someone's eye to actually a reality in the hands of every one of our students' grades three to twelve. And, um, that's a huge undertaking and source of pride for the Milford Public Schools. Um, in addition to that, not only has the district rolled out the, um, the technology, but there's also been a lot of focus on safe use of technology, both in terms of what's happening in the classroom and supporting families with how to support their students in this kind of whole new age of, of parenting. Recruitment of faculty, um, we saw two of them here with us tonight. And multiple have walked through the doors of the Milford Public Schools before these two individuals are here with us. But, um, thinking about the ways that a district, um, attracts, recruits, and retains candidates, um, I, I don't know of another place that has recruitment and interview system that's set up quite like ours here. And I, I think that was homegrown and that was, that was created under Dr. McIntyre's leadership. And, um, it feels when some of these candidates come before us, like we already know them because you've, you've seen them multiple times through the process already. And, um, what a great welcome for these candidates and, and what a great sense of security for us as school committee members. Mentoring program, and I know that Craig, you've been a huge part of that also, um, is certainly is, is a model for other districts around. Really making sure that once we bring those candidates to Milford that they have the support that they need so they stay in the profession, um, and learn and grow the way that they should professionally. Um, we've also had a, a real focus on how to put teachers and faculty and administration in front of students who, um, represent diverse cultures, which represent our student body. And, um, we, we don't find candidates of color and, and from different ra- ethnicities and who kind of represent different members of our student body. They don't just walk in our doors. We have to actively find them. Um, it's a real area of deficit for all communities in Massachusetts. And the research does show that when students see a teacher that looks like them, um, it helps them to progress in a better way. And so I applaud Dr. McIntyre and we do as a committee, free work in that area. In terms of standard three, um, family and community engagement, uh, again, we've had twenty languages that our updates are translated into to afford access to, um, the vast majority of our community members. We have Milford TV. We have, um, a very admirable and formidable social media presence from the Milford Public Schools. Um, I did not realize we had fifty active Twitter accounts, although I should've because I think we all s- seen and been part of lots of pictures that have found their way to Twitter. Uh, but I think that is, you know, keeping up with the times and that's the way people access information. Um, likewise, we still can't forget about the fact that we do have print media in our town, um, in terms of Milford Daily News and the Town Crier. And, um, we've seen a growing presence and I, I think we've seen a frequency of articles forwarded to us in terms of what Milford is doing and publicizing that work. Hundreds of events were held over the course of the year where families had been invited in, um, for a range of topics, um, from school start time to facility planning, um, eh, on and on we can go. But the, the community is certainly, um, welcoming these schools. Our schools are open, um, for all reasons at all times. And certainly we've seen our central office administration at many, many of the events, um, that we've all been at ourselves. We have a growing number of partners in the business community that have helped support our programming and our students. Um, and I think that, that's a fairly representative summary of standard three. And standard four is professional culture. And thinking about, you know, how do we sustain a culture of reflective practice, which is the overarching goal of standard four, um, I think that we see around this table, uh, multiple times, the number of conferences that people are asked to attend or, um, the fact that Dr. McIntyre always asks, um, I shouldn't just call you Dr. McIntyre and call you, you Craig.
I'm com- I'm comfortable with that. I'm completely comfortable with that.
Um, but it's, it's great that you have that voice around the table, Craig. And so we can, um, come to count on in every meeting, we're apprised of what's happening with curriculum and instruction. And, um, that's a, that's a really important piece that, that, you know, Kevin shares with you and, and shares with us. Uh, one thing that is a really nice source of pride, again, going back to, um, the colleges, is thinking about our eighth graders. And I think it was interesting to hear Tahan already talking about helping to expose our eighth graders to kind of the college scene and, um, you know, to get our kids thinking about that and what's your pathway going to be. And, um, let's start some active thinking here, um, knowing that we have the Smith Family Foundation, uh, grant, which has now afforded us this partnership with some local colleges, um, focusing on this eighth grade cohort, um, and helping to really provide them with some targeted academic support and college access programming. And I think that what we see in, um, Dr. McIntyre's work is, a- and this is reflected through the principals and we've seen it many, many times when Josh Outland comes, it's really thinking about the whole student and the pathways that will help our students, um, get themselves on the path for success. Whether it's a four-year college, a two-year, a work, military, whatever it may be, um, this district has taken a whole, um, student approach. So overall, um, y- you know, I think that we are most fortunate in Milford. We have a reflective leader, um, who's very willing to listen, dialogue, consider different perspectives. Um, we've seen a lot of changes in our administrative team, um, over the course of, of Kevin's tenure here with us. And, um, a- as I've noted and we've noted in our evaluations, um, the, the me- the measures that have gone, that he's gone through to bring really high-quality people to Milford has been admirable. Um, again, the highlight in terms of strides this year, the SEL work, um, and some of the programming that, that that brought to us, increasing counseling service for over a hundred and forty families, um, is very significant. Um, the other kind of interesting thing that, um, happened is, you know, sometimes we have positions in this district and I, I like the way that this administration thinks creatively and things are reconfigured and thought about differently and creatively. And, um, we're not always thinking inside, well, this is what we've always done and this is what we have to do. I see a lot of forward thinking in this district. Uh, so in terms of some of the things that the committee has recommended, in terms of m- moving forward and thinking about plans for the upcoming year, um, some of the things that seemed fairly consistent in terms of the evaluations that this committee has put together would be, um, continuing to keep that goal of continuous learning on the forefront and really continuing to pay attention to success for all students and what that looks like and how we're going to ensure that, um, some of the ways that that will be ensured is continuing to use assessment data at the building level, um, so we can really promote increased attention to instructional practices and really looking at those measurable student outcomes. And I know we've talked about that with principals who've come before us. I know that you're gonna be talking with us about one of those assessment programs, um, in just a little while, um, later tonight. Um, collaborative work with school administration, our school committee, um, town departments, to provide continued leadership as we continue to look at the facilities and really think about, you know, what will that look like? What's our plan moving forward? So your support in that, um, Kevin, will be really critical in your leadership in that area in terms of getting us where we need to be with our facilities. I think that we've talked about, um, again, continue, continuing to work to promote the benefits of an, an education in the Milford Public Schools and helping us to better understand if there are people who are making different choices. Um, are there things we can do to help retain our students here in Milford? Um, sometimes there will be, sometimes there won't be. But I think, um, working towards that survey, um, which I know you'll speak to a little bit later tonight and really helping us acquire the data that we need, um, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our families the best that we can. Um, so again, I think in terms of my summary, um, we, you know, I've said it already that, um, it's been a great year and we are very fortunate, um, to have you. And that is really compilation of this committee, this body of seven. I, I will say, I should've said this at the beginning, um, John did not participate in this and, um, I think actually with very valid reasons why, um, being newly elected in April. Um, we talked about this and I think I, you know, I very much respect when someone comes onto the committee without an entire year's worth of information and data, um, it's, it's really challenging to be part of creating something like that.
Yeah, if I, if I can just, um, take a minute. I didn't feel that I had enough, um, close engagement and involvement to, you know, um, judge Dr. McIntyre's performance over the course of a year. Um, I only had a few months of, of really close engagement and involvement. I didn't think it was fair, um, in any light for me to, to, to evaluate.
Well, and I think that, given the timing and when we actually do our evaluations on this particular committee, it, I think it's something we wanna actually pursue maybe through our policy subcommittee is, do we wanna think about a policy for, what, what is the right timeline for someone to come in and do an evaluation? If you're just elected in April and you haven't had a full year to base an evaluation on, I, I think it's something the committee may wanna talk about.
And by the same token, it's, it's disappointing that, you know, somebody that sat here through the whole year and for the past six years didn't, didn't get to give his input, you know, the outgoing.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah. Yeah, and so I think talking about timeline and what makes sense is something that we, we certainly could raise. Um, so that's kinda my summary, but I'd certainly like to open up to the committee and see if people would like to add things or, um, share whatever you'd like to with, with Kevin.
Just to read my, just the overall, um, evaluation comments that, that I had at the end of mine. Um, start out, you know, Milford Public Schools is a, you know, public school system consisting of over forty-two hundred students in the pre-K through grade twelve levels. Milford has five school buildings within the district and over three hundred employees in the direction of Dr. Kevin McIntyre, superintendent of our schools. Dr. McIntyre has recently completed his fourth year as superintendent for Milford, previously as our assistant superintendent. Dr. McIntyre has promoted a school system that strives to prepare its students for challenges beyond graduation. He has charted an educational ladder of learning, beginning in the elementary grades, that has followed as students work towards graduation with a focus both on college and career readiness. Milford has a diverse student population that requires directions of various paths of educational development. The addition of the advanced learning classes and the development of vocational programs are both recognized achievements. The current strategic plan in its second year, where the four areas of focus are essential building blocks that will require continued support through next school year. The continuation of regular meetings with the district's principals and central office staff helps to promote the development of curriculum, continuous learning, and growth for all students. These interactions will also benefit the foundation, justification, and support needed to develop a future comprehensive school budget presented to the, to us, the school committee. The implement, implementation of classroom assessment tools will also benefit students and teachers alike as the district needs to focus on improving our accountability classification. And I think that was one of the things that I, I noted that, you know, when you do look at our accountability classification, it does show currently Milford is a district as partially meeting targets. So if you look at it from a standpoint of how the snapshot is, we want to improve that and I think we all do in this room. So, you know, and that's according to, you know, the Department of Education. So in parallel, though, Milford's composite performance index in math, English, and science indicate a path towards this improvement. Uh, with the addition of the district's mass supervisor and continuous focus using the Writing with Colors directive, um, Milford needs to focus on the meeting targets classification. I think we certainly can achieve that based on our educational lines. Um, another thing was just, you know, continued, uh, communication with this committee, you know, just in the best interest that we, we as a committee know and understand kind of everything that's going on within our school district. And, uh, to continue that process that, again, that we're aware of everything that's going on. Um, as we discussed, the development of the, uh, you know, and looking at the school choice, um, you know, the direction of why, why people leaving and, you know, how do we, uh, retain them? And then again, um, the community engagement and just, you know, we've done a lot with, um, digital media, um, and just how can we maybe, uh, work on face-to-face communication with those within our community that we know may not have digital media? So we do, we talk a lot about the diversity within our community. So, um, how do we best outreach to those people that aren't going to, um, have digital media and get face-to-face with them? So that would be some of the things to work on. But overall, like I said, I feel like it's, uh, you're doing a proficient job for our, uh, school. Look forward to, uh, you know, another year of, of moving forward on that ladder.
Great, thank you.
Megan?
Sure, thanks. So first off, thank you. Because it was a daunting task as an individual to complete it, so I can appreciate that combining six, um, takes a lot of time. So thank you for focusing and doing such a thorough job. Um, Kevin, I guess my impression and sort of in my tenure here is it's never been status quo and change is very hard. And so I think, I'm just impressed by both the quantity and the quality of the changes that we continue to make. They seem very thoughtful and I feel like we're progressing towards the right things. I just wanted to sort of commend you on that. I know there's more to go and more we would like to do and see. Um, but I think that the changes that we've been focused on have all been the right things. Um, Jen also mentioned sort of the strength of both the recruiting and the mentoring process. And I just, I think we continue to hit home runs there. I mean, I think both the caliber of the candidates and the programs, you know, Craig, that we provide them once they come in, it's fantastic to hear them come on board and talk about how welcomed they felt in two weeks. I mean, I think that says a lot about our district. Um, so I'd love to hear and learn more about the culture of our tenured staff who spent more time here cause I feel like it's so positive from the new hires. I'd love to kind of engage and do more with people who have spent their, their careers in Milford. Um, and then just thinking ahead in terms of, you know, specis- specificity of goals, I, I just look forward to what you bring to the table for the next year. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Laura? Um, I just wanna thank Dr. McIntyre as well for his hard work all this past year. Um, certainly you're very committed to the district and I think you can see that in all the initiatives and all the things that Jen just outlined, um, a few minutes ago. So thank you for, um, all of your efforts. Um, Jen also mentioned how much time it kind of took to put some of this together, so thank you for doing that. Um, and I'm kind of wondering what, how the committee feels about maybe thinking about a subcommittee for the evaluation process. Um, we have a subcommittee for, you know, budget and for policy. I don't know if that's something that would help us in kind of looking at the evaluation throughout the year, um, maybe kind of focusing on some of the standards or some of the indicators that we kind of need evidence or wanna see evidence for. Um, maybe that could be helpful, you know, meeting throughout the year to kind of look at that. And, um, yeah, just wanted to say thank you for all of your hard work and then see if maybe the committee is interested in doing something like that.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Sounds good. So I'll just say, I just wanna say thank you for all of your hard work. Um, and it has been a, it's been a pleasure to work with you over the last three years. And I'm looking forward to working with you over another three years. Um, and, um, I do applaud, a lot of the stuff was, has already been said, but in a lot of stuff that, that Chris had mentioned, a lot of the forward-looking curriculum such as, um, you know, things that are focused on, um, kids that may, um, may not be on a college track. You know, as our student body, uh, grows in needs and, um, requirements, I, you know, I applaud you and your administration for, um, being progressive in terms of looking to fill gaps in that capacity. So, thank you very much and I look forward to more of it.
Pretty, thank you.
Any other member? All right, so I think Laura, um, I don't have an answer to your question about the subcommittee, but I do think that, um, thinking about maybe bringing in somebody from MASC, maybe we combine that idea with possibly bringing in one of our MASC experts and maybe she can guide us and help us understand if that would be a helpful route. So if she gives us some tips and things that we think would help us, maybe that would be a natural offshoot of that meeting with her.
Sure. Yeah, just the number of indicators within the different standards. I mean, it's, there's so many. I know as an educator myself, you know, we only pick a handful of the standards to provide evidence for. Um, so maybe that would help on our focus in evaluation procedures.
Yeah. Can you?
So can I make just a couple comments?
Dr. McIntyre?
Alright, so one thing I want you to think about is you went through this process with just one individual, is our principals and assistant principals are doing between twenty-five and forty of these, and the
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
superintendent rubric isn't larger than the teacher's rubric or the principal's rubric, it's pretty much about the same, the indicators are different, but just kind of multiply that out and think about how long it took you to do, um just, and I don't wanna say just one, but one one process and multiply that by like anywhere from twenty-five to forty. Um so just gonna keep that in the back of your head, you know, as you're as you're thinking about like some of the things that our administrators do.
I'll put that in the front of my head.
Um secondly, um you know, I hear a lot of the 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 stuff, I I look at like the comments, the evaluation, when I kind of went through, it's almost like a reflection of the year. And it it, you know, makes me think, wow, we've, and I say we, 'cause I don't wanna say I, we've accomplished a lot as a district and 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 really it speaks to um you know, the great teachers, administrators, you know, cafeteria staff, administrative assistants and secretaries, staff assistants, central office team um that all kind of works together to get a lot of this stuff done. And we have, um you know, we have a phenomenal faculty that is willing to take chances and risks and try new things. And, you know, I I truly appreciate that. Um as much as I, you know, give Craig a hard time on occasion, um I I, you know, I couldn't do it without him and Kathy and Lucy Jenkins, especially the director, and Jen O'Janey and D E L director, and Lisa Kincaid. Um because they all do like, I mean, they all work incredibly hard and they all do like an amazing job. And when you have, like, part of the reason why I focus so much on recruitment is when you have great people in place or people that are moving in that direction, it makes, you know, everybody look better and it and it and it kind of lessens the load for everybody, 'cause we've got a ton of creative thinkers and and thoughtful educators who who truly care about, you know, the students that we serve, which is our, you know, really our job at the end of the day. So um it's it's funny that uh to hear, you know, both Tahan and Lee will talk about feeling welcomed and I and I can say the same thing, from the moment I walked into Milford, I truly felt welcomed. And, you know, I probably spend more time here than I do where where I actually rest my head at the end of the night. Um and and I love the Milford community, like it's it's, you know, home to me and I, you know, and I just appreciate, I think, working with this team too, because I think, you know, if if we weren't working effectively together, I think things would be a lot different. And I think we've we've really got gone to a place where we're really moving, I think, the district in a good direction and I give I give this group a lot of credit as well, so it's um, a lot of the things in this list are things that I engaged with and, you know, if I said I did this, I did this, I did this, it's really not reflective of all the hard work that happens across the district, so, uh you know, I wanna say thank you to the full Milford team, because without their hard work, I think, you know, I think a lot of the positive stuff that was said tonight, it wouldn't be possible, so that's kind of my takeaway from it, but I do appreciate all the positive comments as well.
Alright, thank you. Alright.
Oh, I'm up, I'm up.
Oh, good.
So you're welcome for that.
Report of the superintendent of schools.
Alright, so this is actually pretty quick, um a couple of committee members made a request to kind of get a sense of what key things happen kind of each month. And a a couple pieces to this is that timelines sometimes shift and sometimes it's out of our control and sometimes we just need to do more thinking about stuff, so we move something back a month or two, but I think this is gonna give you kind of a broad outline of kind of what key things happen in each month that have been kind of consistent. And I think, you know, and I and I give Melissa Bull a a ton of credit too, um because she pulled this together, because she's she's predominantly responsible for pulling the um the agendas together for the for the school committee. Uh so I don't know if you wanna take a look at it for a few seconds, but I think it's gonna give you kind of a guide of like, this is kind of how a year goes. And if we do something at the policy level around like my evaluation, that's some things we could probably add into this list probably next year. Um but we're really trying to kind of give you kind of a broad overview of like, these are the big ticket items for each month.
Yeah, good question, um on the facilities update, I know we haven't reached one yet this year, obviously we have it in June, I'm wondering, should that be kicked more towards um into August, it sound like, you know, last year when Rob gave his his overview, oh, he waited, you know, a lot of stuff is fixed up and changed over the summer time, you know, and and there's usually some budgetary impacts like we saw earlier today that we had to kind of hold off some projects
Over the summer.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
in order to facilitate some other other uh actions, so um yeah, that's one thing, if we can maybe change that around facilities-wise and then also just as a, you know, you know, we're not an undernude business, but obviously to have Rob come in in the near future and just to kind of give us an update of
Mm-hmm.
of um where he's at and the um direction he's going.
Yep, we can definitely do that, and I'll put August or September, 'cause I'll I'll talk to Rob and see if that makes more sense, because if he's still doing the work in August, September might even make more sense.
Right. Right, yeah, hopefully, hopefully by August, it's it's on its final, it's on its cleanup run, yeah.
Okay. It's usually, it's usually done and ready, usually we're making a a presentation in August saying, hey, this is this is an issue.
Right. Yeah.
Um but yeah, I can talk to Rob and see what he says.
And that might speak to, it's the October meeting of um if there's any um big ticket items that we need to go to uh the town on.
Yep, yep, nope, that makes perfect sense.
We're we're not getting to the school release on assignments, so like in September. That's listed.
Is that on there right now, Laura?
It is on the hard copy.
It's uh it's uh it's on.
It's in September.
September, okay.
Look, draw the copy, yeah.
Okay, yep, I got it. And what are you, what are you requesting?
Just that we're not doing it, so we would do it.
Yeah, I think she just know that we've decided not to.
Okay, yep, just c- cut it, I gotcha, I gotcha.
So we just wanna take it off. Yeah, just remove it.
Alright. Anything else? Alright, there's no need for a vote or anything, this is really just for your information.
Great, thank you for pulling that together for us.
You're right.
Was that your whole report?
That was it.
Okay.
Short and sweet.
Report of the assistant superintendent, Mr. Consigli.
Thank you, uh just have two quick things for everyone, I wanna talk about um the iReady assessment, that how we landed on iReady and then I wanted to just review um summer reading requirements for all the schools, so first, um just a quick background that we piloted two different assessment platforms during the last school year, two thousand eighteen nineteen, uh we piloted those at Brookside Memorial and Woodland. Um we, I say we, um there was teachers, administrators, myself, we met with teachers, we observed some of the assessments being administered and then we also analyzed reports that both platforms provided, we concluded that um iReady was the best going to meet our needs. Um the decision, I guess, was largely based on the teacher's ability to read the reports and have the reports inform their instruction. Um ultimately and overwhelmingly, the teachers thought that the reports iReady provided um were easy to read, but then also they provided multiple ways for teachers to provide interventions for struggling learners. Uh so basically, that's how we landed on iReady over um the other platform that we were looking at. Um so in order to get it moving forward for the next year, we're looking at um professional development on how to administer the the um assessment for th- those teachers that weren't using that one, I don't think it'll be a heavy lift for them. Um they're basically the same uh in terms of how to um actually administer it. But then we're also looking at uh professional development later on down the road after they give their first assessment on how to read the reports and what kind of information they can get out of it, and that will hopefully be for all teachers at Brookside Memorial and Woodland. Um and we're also investigating uh whether or not iReady will be useful for math reading and reading in the L A teachers at Stacy. Um our hope is to have an assessment platform that goes K to eight, which is why we looked at those um platforms. Um but we're still not sure that iReady is the answer at the um six eight school, so we may be piloting that this year. Um at Stacy. The other thing that we're investigating is um iReady unfortunately doesn't go through the high school, but the other platform that we looked at did. So we may be piloting that um star three sixty at the high school this year, uh and maybe making a determination of geez, we'll go K five with iReady and then maybe six twelve um with star three sixty, or we'll go K eight with iReady and then just the high school use the the star three sixty. Uh does anybody have any questions about that? Go ahead.
Can you just um remind me, how many times is it administered, is it two times per the school year or is it three?
It's it can, it can be three, so um I I'd also forgot to say two things, the
Okay.
One is through our pilot, we were piloting with kindergarten, we decided not to give it to kindergarten next year, so we're just going, I said, K to eight, we're the K to five, we're going one to five. So kindergarten kids won't be taking um assessment.
Which was a very wise decision.
Um although they did very well, um in the classes that I observed, the cla- the kids seemed very engaged and um I just don't, I don't know, I think we can spend our time in other ways, we get the same information with kindergarten kids, um. But at least two times during the year, and I think um for the majority of kids, it will be two times, but for those kids that um are in interventions, I think we may wanna test them again in the the kind of the winter, but not for all kids.
Alright.
Uh and then the other thing that we're trying to do is is figure out the best way we can use the information and provide it to parents. Um so I think what we're initially, what we're thinking is we can share s- the results from the first assessment at parent-teacher conferences with parents. Um and that way, teachers can kind of talk through what the report is and what it means, um so they don't get a false sense one way or another about how this their child did with the assessment.
Mm-hmm.
But we'll see, we'll see what the year brings. Alright, you have a question?
Yeah, sorry, question, great, was the ca- the through grade eight a change? I felt like we were talking about it, it was always through grade eight, but the budget for next year was just always through five.
Well, yeah, so um the the n- elementary schools have money earmarked for it.
Sorry. Yep.
Um and then Tahan and I were kind of sitting through and it it's not clear to me whether or not there's money actually earmarked um at the middle school for it, um that's one.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
The other is, um we haven't, I I feel like if we invest the money in the the six eight without looking at it, I don't know that that's wise.
Okay.
Uh so I think we need to work with the iReady people and see if they can allow us to pilot it.
Got it.
Um o- otherwise, I just don't, I feel like we're not spending our our money wisely there, 'cause it is, I mean, it's fairly expensive, it's it's
Yep.
between five and six dollars a kid for each test.
Got it.
Not not each test that they take, but for math and then the W- the E L A.
Yep. Okay, Craig, could you just speak to the technology piece, is it like logging into S T math, is it that?
Um yeah, um so iReady will set all the kids up with a um a login, with all the login information, it's fairly simple.
Okay.
Teachers will have it, um and that was that was part of the initial administration is like just trying to figure out how to get all the kids on, um I think this year it'll be a little bit uh clunky as we go, but then after this year, all the kids will be taking it and I think it'll just be nice and easy.
Mm-hmm. Do you expect that all grades one through five at some point this year will be taking at least multiple tests, one test?
I I I expect that all kids one to five will be taking it at least twice a year.
You wouldn't? Oh, great, okay.
Both of them, yeah.
This year, okay, excellent, okay, great, thanks.
Yeah. Uh so the other thing that we're trying to work out at Brookside Memorial is um they have to work out a schedule for the cards that they have, 'cause you need the Chromebooks to be able to do it.
Great. Got it.
Uh so they have to, we're trying to purchase a uh a card or two at the beginning of the year for both schools and then they're gonna work out a schedule.
Thank you.
Yep. Um okay, uh summer reading, so each school provided a list of books for students to read, um and letters were sent home this year in multiple languages. Um I think that over the last, I won't say three years or so, two or three years anyways, we've really changed, I think, what what summer reading looks like, um or have tried to change, we've been back and forth in a couple areas, um but, you know, in the last two or three years, I think yeah, summer reading's required, um but we certainly have backed off um the value that we put on it in the first term grade for students. Um in the past, it could it could have been in as much as twenty percent of a s- child's first term grade. So a child that doesn't do their summer reading, right off the bat, they're starting the first term with the best they could do is an eighty. So um so we've certainly backed off of that and I'll just kind of explain some of the ways that we've done it. Um so at Shining Star Brookside Memorial, students are encouraged to read or be read to for at least twenty minutes every day. Um and a quote I pulled out of uh the the letter that Cory, Lisa and Eric sent was that students are encouraged to choose books that appeal to their personal interests, increasing the likelihood that they will genuinely enjoy the reading experience. So it's very important, especially at this age, that kids are reading about things that they're genuinely interested in. Um hopefully, that will help build their love of reading as they they move on in ages for life. Um the school's provided a substantial list of books and authors that span all genres and multiple languages. Uh and they, students at at those three schools are asked to complete a reading log uh to be turned in at the beginning of the school year. Uh so that's that's what's going on at the pre K to two schools, um. I don't know, I know that we're filling out the reading log every night at my house, uh just three times. It's basically the same thing, but um I think I think this is a fair and and reasonable request for families. Um at Woodland, there are no required books, um authors and assignments, oh, sorry, there are no books, authors or assignments uh that are required for the start of the year. Um and I pulled out a quote from their letter that said, from uh Mr. Kernan. A key component of a successful reading program is student choice, students are encouraged to choose books that appeal to them and suit their own personal interests, increasing the likelihood that they will genuinely enjoy their reading experience. Uh so very similar to what we heard at the K two level, um but at at Woodland, they're doing things a little different, so teachers are teachers will host students and families at different locations in Milford, uh on Wednesday nights throughout July and August for about forty-five minutes. Um he he did provide a list of of different locations for that and it's basically all around town. Uh teachers read their uh uh favorite picture book or selection from a chapter or a novel, and then in addition, any s- Woodland student that attends one of these one of these nights gets a free book, uh so I think that's great. Um they also included a list of favorite authors or teacher-recommended book titles or series on the back of their of their letter. Um and they provided a student log if kids wanted to log books and pass it in at the beginning of the year. Uh so that's Woodland. At Stacy, um Stacy, s- the students are asked to read two books over the summer. Um they were, there is a required book and then there's one that's left for choice, but they have to choose between, um uh no, sorry, in in eighth grade, they have to choose between two. In sixth and seventh, they can choose a book um of their choice. Uh in the sixth grade, uh they have to read a book called Because of Mister Tarred by Robert. Um B A, I I think that's how you say it, by A, uh and then they also need a a fiction choice, um and they also, they were rec- there were recommendations provided. Um but in sixth grade, they need to complete a s- a short writing assignment that was provided by the sixth grade teachers. Um in seventh grade, counting by sevens, by Holly Goldberg Sloan, and then students are asked to answer discussion questions that were provided by the teacher. Uh and then the the second book book is of student choice, students are asked to complete a story map or a plot diagram depending on whether it's fiction or nonfiction. Um and then finally, in the eighth grade, students need to choose two out of three of the following books, uh The Fifty Seven Bus, Delirium or Runner. Um and then students will have an open notebook, so they're allowed to take notes on all the on the book and they'll have an open notes uh assessment shortly after the school begins. Um and then at Stacy, the assignment or assessments are worth no more than five percent. Uh they felt like they needed to put a number on it so that students would actually complete the work, uh so that's why why you see the number there. And then at Milford High School, um in Milford High School, there's one book that all students are required to read by grade level, so four different choices, um. They've been given a set of questions to use as they read the book as a guide, uh so that when they start the school year shortly after the year begins they've been given a set of questions to use as they read the book as a guide uh so that when they start the school year, shortly after the year begins, they'll participate in small group discussions led by a majority of the staff, so it's not just happening in ELA class, it's happening throughout the school. Um The discussion again is based on the questions that was provided. Uh the grade nine class needs to read Feed by M T Anderson, grade ten Cats Cradle, uh grade eleven Brave New World, and then twelve, The Disappearance of Childhood. Um and then that's it for summer reading. So I I think that, again, in the past, there's been a lot of requirements in grades associated with summer reading, which certainly as an English teacher and you're studying the school year and you're ha- you're responsible for grading first of all all of these summer reading assign assignments. But second, if students don't do the summer reading, then you be automatically become the bad guy and we're setting up students for a disastrous um year when you have all these requirements and they're not ready for it. So I'm pleased with the direction it's headed. I think there's still could be some fine tuning for the years to come, but I'm I overall, I think I'm pleased with um our summer reading for this year.
Chris.
Sounds like there's more consistency based on the grade levels. I know in the past, there's, you know, certain clusters, it it or certain grades,
Yeah.
the when you showed up school on day one, the expectation of what y- what you would would present to prove that you read read the book was different.
Yeah.
Sounds it sounds like there's more consistency in that, so you'll see more, like when you're talking, you know, the sixth, seventh, eighth grade, when you have a blue, white and red clusters. Um that I would hear about varying kind of assignments associated with it. Do you feel that it's gonna be more consistent this year?
Yeah, no, I I think that they it the definitely the s- the um teachers at Stacy worked hard to make sure they were on the same page for um at least summer reading and I know moving forward with the um the novel choices that they have throughout the year, they have been working together to make sure that they are consistent.
Okay.
Something else in your hand up over here?
Yeah, I love the direction that it's headed, Craig, in terms of promoting reading for the love of reading and sort of lessening, you know, the impact, you know, or burden, I guess, later.
Hmm.
Um especially at Woodland, I feel like it also helps with the school transition. If your students have a chance to come in and see the school and have it be positive, I had a chance to go to one last year
Mm-hmm.
Mm.
it was incredibly positive and they loved picking out a book, so I think that direction um has many, like a multiple faceted um positive impact, so I think that's great.
Hmm.
Any thoughts on summer math?
Um gee, you know, potentially. I know that um in cer- certain grades, certain teachers send some of that work home. Um but it would certainly have to be review because you wouldn't wanna send work home that um anything that's new. Um yeah, we'll have to think about that. I'd love to be able to offer either enrichment or some kinda help for kids to c- to come in and work with teachers rather than just sending home a bunch of worksheets, you know?
Mm.
Um so yeah, we'll have to think about that.
I guess even as a parent, I would love to know there's somewhere I could go on the website and pull stuff off so that we could just kinda continue to work on things, um to know what's available.
Yeah. Okay. It's a good suggestion.
Do they do they have access to S T math over the summer?
Um
Or does that get transitioned each year?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
'Cause that could be like something like that we could open up and there's some other tools we could probably open up.
Mm-hmm.
Um one of the things we wrestle with with something like that, like your point is, uh it's hard to like pick what kinda math you wanna do, or you could pick a book that's like of a topic that's of interest to you.
Sure. Yeah.
Um I w- I've been doing some reading of a guy named David Berliner and one of the things he recommends is trying to create enrichment experiences. And not so much like enrichment experiences for the kids who are performing like at the top, you know, five percent of, but like opportunities to maybe engage in math in kinda fun and creative ways in the summertime. And that's something I think we're gonna start exploring over the next several years, is how can how can we create some of those more experiential kinda things that aren't necessarily, 'cause I think summer math is it's it's kinda tough in the sense that you know, it ends up being like a packet of worksheets almost.
Hmm.
If, you know, again, I think S T math is pretty engaging, but I think if we do some things where we have, uh maybe some similar to what Woodland's doing, where they're we're ha- they're having like days where people come in and engage with teachers, maybe something like that's possible in math.
I'd just like to prevent them, you close the book in June and you don't think about it again until September, I think it's unfortunate and I think kids tend to go back a little bit and if there's ways that we could think about
Yeah, yep, one hundred percent, yeah, one hundred percent. Yep.
Mm-hmm.
continuing that. And again, not as punishment or to hurt your grade, but just more opportunities.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, yeah, no, I think it's a it's a good point, but I think we I think we gotta be thoughtful about how we do it.
Okay. Sure.
At one point, oh, I was just saying, at one point in the past, there was a calendar. I don't know if your kids maybe didn't get it.
I don't think so.
Um because I I don't think it's happened in a couple years, but it was like thirty days of the summer, however many days, and there were optional activities, but there were different types of experiential
I'd love that.
um activities that kids could do. I don't remember if it was mandatory or not, but
So so we I t- my kids did get that.
Hmm.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so my two at Brookside did get that. It's a calendar and you're supposed to do some kind of math problem.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
And there's a workbook that they sent home, um and you're supposed to do it with a parent and every day it's something different.
Oh, okay, we didn't really know about.
So again, maybe just regards to the consistency comment, you know, not to make it all the teachers burden, but if there was some central location that that was accessible, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Right, 'cause I think, or classes going in eighth grade, that we shared students in there that they, it was a little, I think it was two summers ago, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I don't remember getting a workbook, but it was.
That they had a, it wa- it was a booklet of math and yeah, they could go through and and I wanna say it was for bonus points more than anything, that if they did this, it was
Mm. Yeah, it it, yeah.
it was a bonus. So yeah, there certainly was not a a penalty for not doing it, but there was an incentive to to do it and and to go through and again, yeah, just kinda keep your skills sharp in math.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, incentive.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
That's pretty something I could think about, I'd love to.
That's that's something that maybe our new director of mathematics could kinda jump in, jump in too.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, there you go.
Yep.
Thanks.
Jim? Yeah, I just had a quick thought. Um so when I when I was involved with um Alex's business program this year, um the two class like quasi-class things that I got involved with, one one in the fall, I had about ten kids and one in the spring, or about six or seven kids. We covered a lot of uh topics that were business associated, but one of the elements that we did was some quantitative um analytics.
Mm-hmm.
And so even though you wouldn't run a class on quantitative anal- analytics, you could maybe build it into like a business project or or some type of project, doesn't have to be business, where you could apply, you know, general mathematics skills to try to solve something that might be like common base. Like in the in the um, you know, in the quasi-class that I ran, we talked about, um, you know, we we took analytic principles and applied it to like things that they were familiar with, like, you know, building their iPhones, and we talked about margin structure and margin stack. Um I was able to draw parallels to how much things cost.
Mm-hmm.
And when you go to the store and you buy it, you know, how much does it cost to build it versus how much does it cost to get it to the Verizon store? So it's like it made sense in a lot of capacity because they could rationalize what I was talking about. So I didn't know if it was possible to do something math oriented because the word math and summer, you know, just don't go together. So I don't know, do you think that's something that would be, that we could take offline that you'd be interested in talking about or?
Of course. And um and I think I I think you're right because I think the way that kids think of math in summer, it doesn't work.
Ugh.
But if you talk about, okay, we're gonna build a lemonade stand, sell it lemonade, and you wanna make a profit, how are we gonna do that?
I was gonna. Yeah. That's that's very different. I just thought, you know, it's very different because I saw a lot of, and uh that let me just preface by saying I'm not an educator, but I saw a lot of enthusiasm around trying to figure out real world problems, especially if they had some qualitative context around what we were talking about.
Hmm. Mm-hmm. Hmm.
And so I just thought I'd throw it out there to see if maybe, you know, you'd wanna talk offline about some ideas on how to drive practical solutions, you know, for core for core topics.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your work with us.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, thanks, Craig.
Great, so I do believe that we overlooked the gift.
Oh, we did, yeah.
So, yeah, so it
Is it okay to do it now?
Yeah, you just do it right now.
Okay. Um so we do have a gift this evening um from the Lowe's Corporation. And this is in response to launching Generation T, which is a movement intended to help fill the skilled trade gap um that analysts predict will leave three million jobs open by two thousand twenty eight. Um so Lowe's is happy to donate eleven thousand dollars worth of product and another fourteen thousand dollars um that has been set aside for us in a store account at the Milford Lowe's store, allowing us to purchase um materials for our skilled trades program.
Excellent, that's great.
So um that's twenty five thousand dollars for those of us who like to do math in our head.
In some.
Um but that's just another great example of the leadership in this district and the partnership
Yeah, that's really cool.
between a high school and the businesses. So would anyone like to make the motion to accept this gift? Motion by John, second by Chris, all in favor? All right, we'll send that down. Do we have any future agenda items?
I do, Jim.
John?
Um I'd just love to, with us, uh we try to make some time this fall or late summer, early fall to get together with our finance director and and just get a higher level understanding of our
Mm-hmm.
our overall town finances, not just our our own particular budget.
Mm-hmm. Are there any future agenda items?
Hmm.
All right, well, I'm sure there'll be plenty of other things to add to the the list moving forward.
Absolutely.
Okay. Old business.
So I've got two things under old business.
Okay.
Um the first is uh I've identified a group to develop and administrate, administer, excuse me, the school choice survey. Um I anticipate executing the contract with them in the next couple weeks. Um they will begin the development process upon execution and we are targeting the second half of October for the survey rollout to families. They felt like that was a reasonable timeframe. Um we're we're looking at all families too that have made a choice other than Milford Public Schools.
Mm.
So this includes homeschooling, private schools, technical schools, charter schools, virtual schools, like anytime they've made a choice other than Milford. We figured it'd be broad and we think we'd get more data and more information that way. Um the second thing I have is um, it's funny you say that, John, because that's my second item. Um I reached out to Chris Moran, the chair of the finance committee, as well as Rick Filani and Zach Taylor, to try to set up meetings initially with the central office team and try to figure out a way to schedule time with the school committee to start to talk about the long range end plan, that could include just the financial health of the town as well in those conversations. So I'm hoping we can get a meeting with both those guys before the end of the summer with the our admin team and we can kinda schedule something for the early fall with the with the broader group. Okay? That's that's my old business.
Great.
Just a comment, I don't wanna um take away from how, you know, thoughtful the approach would be on the school choice here, right?
Alright.
But I would really not like to see the results of that slip into twenty twenty for us getting feedback back.
I think the the turnaround is relatively quickly.
Okay.
Um because I think it's just, i- it's not gonna be a ton of data 'cause there's not, there's just not a ton of people.
Okay. October's just a lot later than I was thinking, which is okay if it's gonna be, you know, back we done, et cetera. I just wouldn't wanna hear that we weren't gonna learn until next summer or something.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, 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 no. I I think you're probably talking another month or so of data analysis, like collection and analysis and probably sometime in December, I'm hoping to kind of
Okay, no biggie, if that could be part of the process.
Yeah.
If it's rolled out in October, will that allow us to also include those who've made a choice this current year?
Um probably, like we'll we'll have that, we'll have that, we'll have that, we should have that information too because we'll have the, you know, the the s- choice out and, you know, the B V T families, that sort of thing.
So that, I mean, that's one pro of that, I think. Yeah. Yeah, 'cause October first, we really know who's here and who's not, so that's, so that might be good.
Yeah, we 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 know, yeah.
Thanks.
Yep.
Alright, I think the next um agenda item is actually adjournment. Um and our plan tonight is to adjourn from this meeting and move into an executive session. Um so um I would make a motion to go into executive session to discuss um the upcoming contract and uh details of that for the superintendent and we will not be returning into open session. Um so we'll take a roll call vote for that this afternoon.
Yes.
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 Okay, so this meeting is adjourned? No, this meeting is not adjourned.
Well, you're moving to exact and not returning to open.
Duh.
Okay, so I, we're, so we take a vote?
We just took a vote.
We just took, alright, what do we?
So you just have to close the me- this meeting.
Yeah.
We're closing this meeting, okay.